Good evening to everyone, and at this time I'd like to call this meeting of the Mills River Planning Board to order. If you'll please join me in standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, do we have any adjustments or additions to tonight's agenda? That would be a no. Silence is golden. All right, each of you received an electronic copy of our minutes from June 15th and had a chance to look over those for approval. At this time, I would like to either make any changes you felt necessary or entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion, we approve.
So if a motion to approve, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Do we have any public comments signed up or electronically?
No, I haven't received any electronically.
All right, and as we have no old business, we are going to segue right into our new business tonight. So the first item that we have on the agenda tonight is text amendment TXT dash 21 dash 02 from Bold Rock Partners. As you read in the information packet that you received, our role as the planning board tonight is simply as an advisory committee. Once again, we can make a recommendation to approve. We can make a recommendation to postpone a decision for up to 45 days, or we can make a recommendation to deny. So with that, I will let Daniel give us the ins and outs.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So again, before you this evening is the text amendment application submitted by Brian Golden on behalf of Artisanal Brewing Ventures to modify chapter 154, 007, definition section 154, 058, which is the Mills River Neighborhood Commercial District, and chapter 154, 090, site standards for certain uses within the Mills River Neighborhood Commercial District. The application is included as attachment A, and you will see behind that application, the original text provided by the applicants. This is identical to what is in the next attachment, which is attachment B. It's just formatted to be in the format of the town's codes. In summary, this request is to modify the Mills River Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District to allow additional principal uses as well as a few secondary uses. Those specific uses are listed as warehousing and storage, manufacturing, processing, distribution of food and food products. The secondary uses are included in the attachment. The applicant has provided a copy of the amendments requesting these new uses be permitted with standards, which is a staff level review. And the difference between that and what we call by right is that in a permitted with standard situation, the use is allowed so long as the application is submitted along with all the appropriate materials. And then there's a list of additional standards that apply. So for, an example, something that's permitted by right, like a house in a presidential district, you need the application, the site plan, and the fee, and that's the end of it, as long as you meet your setbacks. For projects that are approved with standards, there's usually an additional layer of requirements that go with that. For example, for a certain use in a business district, you might have tighter setbacks, or you might have greater parking requirements. Something that is specific to that use that has to be complied with prior to the issuance of the permit. But it's administrative, so no additional board review by the planning board or Board of Adjustment or Town Council. So with this report, you'll see an additional attachment, attachment C, which is staff's version of these proposed amendments. It's very simple, the staff's version is very similar to the applicant's proposal. It does switch the permitting process from permitted with standards to a special use permit for an additional layer of oversight from the Board of Adjustment, which then also includes its condition-making authority. Some of the key changes to this are obviously the two additional uses, as well as the secondary uses, but also a larger building footprint size for non-residential structures in the neighborhood commercial district, and then additional buffering requirements with these uses to protect any residences nearby where this building, warehousing, storage, food processing facility might be located. In terms of staff's recommendation and plan compliance, this is consistent with the town's recently adopted land use vision map, or excuse me, land use plan. There's a statement of consistency at the end of the packet identifying a specific element and section of the code, or excuse me, the plan with which this complies. And then there are also two different zoning maps in your packet attachments, D and E. Attachment D is the current existing zoning map. Attachment E is the same map, but with an additional layer that's entitled off limits. And what that is, is if you take the 500-foot buffer requirement in the proposed text and assume that if you measure off of the building footprints that are residential in those districts, everything that's the darker shade would not allow for any of these uses because they're too close to existing residential structures. So it does affect the, this change would affect the entire neighborhood commercial district. But in practicality, assuming nothing else changes in terms of future rezonings, the actual areas impacted are less than the entire district due to the fact of the 500-foot buffer requirement. The other requirement regarding separation of uses is if a structure is built, a warehousing structure, for example, on vacant land is built next door to a residence, and that residence, the structure itself, is located within 200 feet of the common line of the properties, then the additional buffer requirement is brought into play there. They'll provide additional consideration, or excuse me, additional separation rather, for the two uses. So in summary, this amendment is consistent with the new comprehensive plan, 2040 Making Mills River Plan. Staff is recommending approval of its recommendation, which is attachment C. And I am available for questions, and Mr. Golden is here as well. With that, I'm finished.
And I'm happy to make a presentation at the appropriate time, just to add a little bit, thank you, Dan, for doing such a thorough job.
Okay, so I'd like to open up the floor for discussion, or any specific questions that anyone might have for Daniel or Mr. Golden? Am I pronouncing that correct?
Yeah. And I'm happy to share my thoughts, Madam Chairperson, just briefly, with the concept of what we were trying to do with this addition to the plan. If anybody cares to hear me, I'm out.
I'm sure, I'm sure. I feel like you're a frequent flyer here recently, you know, so we would love for you to give us a synopsis of your thoughts.
Yeah, and Danny, you did a great job, thank you very much. I'm Brian Golden, I represent Artisanal Brewing Ventures, which runs Bold Rock Partners over there down the street. And the idea came to us when there was a little bit of push and pull with the zoning district down there and some of the residential units that are on the, I'm going to say, the southwest side of the property. It's a larger property, and I'm not here to speak for all of it, just for my clients. And the idea was to have a, an area in which certain things, certain things are allowed, which are less intense than industrial uses, but that if allowed, of course, they're more intense than residential, they would be shielded from those adjoining residential uses. And my first stab at it, I sent it to Daniel, and then we set up a meeting, Daniel and I did, I think Mike might have been there right at the end. But we kind of came up with some different ideas of if your building, if your building's larger, you have to have more separation distance, which seemed fair and reasonable. That if, you know, there are some residentially zoned adjacent properties, and there's a structure on it already, you can't build your structure too close to it, that if you build it within a certain distance, you have to have extra buffers. And in fact, we put in a provision that if a building exceeds 15,000 square feet, you have to double the setback of the neighborhood commercial district. All of that, of course, is just to say, look, any expansion that wants to happen in the neighborhood commercial district that is not as intense as industrial, but more intense than residential, we want to make sure that everyone feels comfortable with looking at it. And now, I would prefer that staff have the authority to review and approve it with those special conditions. We spent time, Daniel and I did, talking about what those conditions, those site requirements should be, and the separation distance. Staff, of course, said, well, we'd rather have the Board of Adjustment review it as far as a special use permit. And the reason I like staff approval, it's not nearly as contentious. At a Board of Adjustment approval, you have, you have an opposition side and the applicant's side, and it can last several hours till 12:30 in the morning. And, and, you know, and it's not always a given. We were trying, we, I and Daniel, when I was crafting this, were trying to make it such that the use was by right, subject to special requirements or supplemental requirements, to avoid the contention. And that's why we kind of separated it, we tried to remove it from, yeah, separate it further from the residences. And that is all in Exhibit B. Daniel said Exhibit A and Exhibit B, or Attachment A and Attachment B were the same thing. They're slightly different. Attachment A was my first stab at what I was looking for. And then Attachment B was modified when, after Daniel and I met, and then he formatted it. For instance, when you look at the dimensional requirements, I, after my conversation with Daniel, increased the maximum building footprint size to 20,000 square feet, added a footnote number two that then increased the size of the setback. Also in those, I think we made it clear that it's the maximum footprint side, size of the building, not the gross square footage, so it's a 20,000-square-foot building. But if it had a half-story on one part of it, that still wouldn't exceed 20,000 square feet in footprint. In my version, I think Daniel indicated that I put in sales training and meeting facilities related to the principal use, including overnight lodging. I think Daniel struck that in his version, which is version C. I don't, I don't have any objection to that, other than I certainly would like to have the sales training and meeting facilities related to the principal use remain, including the overnight lodging, I think, is where staff thought that that might be a little hiccup. And so if this board's going to, to consider that, I could easily see, and I don't want to use Bold Rock for an example, because I want it to be a broad scope of additional uses. But if we were using Bold Rock for an example, I could see where they would have a small little area where they would have sales training and meeting facilities related to the principal use, which is their manufacturing of ciders. Now, I put the, including overnight lodging. I did that for a reason, for the life of me, I don't know what that is. But I would ask this board in making the recommendation maybe to put that back in Daniel's version, if that's the one it's considering adopting, but then taking out overnight lodging. And I think that's, those were all of my matters that I wanted to address. If the board has any questions, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise, I'm happy to move this meeting along.
So just stay there for a moment.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So you are representing Bold Rock Partners, correct?
That's correct, well, and they're owned by Artisanal Brewing Ventures.
It was just listed, Bold Rock Partners, so. So the current zoning of the Bold Rock property is light industrial right now?
That is correct.
Correct, yes. So the relevance to them would be future expansion, I'm assuming, to the east? Properties that are currently zoned to neighborhood commercial?
Oh, to the east. Future expansion, I think, would be where, wherever it is practical. So maybe to the south, I don't know if there's, I think there's flood plain to the south, so that may not be practical, right? Isn't there a little?
Well, to the south is light industrial, so it wouldn't be relevant to the neighborhood commercial.
What the idea, what, what the idea is, is with a, with a text amendment, if, according to the comprehensive plan, that those areas south of, Daniel hugged me with that road is, south of?
Schoolhouse.
Schoolhouse, thank you, were considered for a change from light industrial. That was a long-range plan. And so the idea was, looking at the long-range plan, the 2040 plan, which I think council adopted
Yes.
a couple of months ago, having it changed to fit what the long-range plan is, it would be better if it was neighborhood commercial, so that the district to the east was expanded over the light industrial. So the light industrial would be gone, and I'm not saying that that's going to happen. It might happen, or it might not. If we were, if we, Bold Rock, were to, let's say, buy a piece of property to the south, we could, and it was neighborhood commercial with this new provision, we could do, Bold Rock could do whatever it is that they want to do on that property, whether it's expand warehousing, or storage, or training facilities. So that's the idea, we're taking a preventative measure.
So you're covering all the contingencies, because you don't really know where you might land, but you want it to be available wherever it might be?
Wherever it might be, thank you, yes. Because, I mean, that's true, I think Mills River, I think that their long-range plan doesn't have that, those, that large parcel being industrial. So we want to make sure that we're able to operate within the bounds of a neighborhood commercial district, which seems like a logical district for that location.
Okay, so, so you found it easier to propose a text amendment rather than a rezoning request, which might cover the use that you're speaking about?
So, and that's an excellent question, because yes, the text, the only, the districts within which an expansion of Bold Rock could happen are only light industrial or your free-for-all district that you have on the other side, which is mixed use. Mixed use, right? Those are the only two districts if they wanted to do warehousing and, and distribution. And so, yet, the answer is to do a zoning map amendment, a rezoning, there was no district that fit. And my first idea was to create conditional zoning district, right? Let's, let's, let's do a conditional zoning district, and we could have it as a, not, it's not an overlay, but a conditional zoning district is one in which you rezone it to a specific purpose, or for a specific purpose, which I think the town should have, right? So that if you want to go out and you want to open up a dog kennel, and it's only allowed in industrial districts, and you, you have a neighborhood commercial, you'd have to rezone your whole property to industrial district, which opens up a ton of other uses. Conditional zoning allows you to say, I don't want any of those in other industrial uses, I just want the kennel. Right, so that, that's it, and then it gets permitted rezoned as the kennel. So we could not have rezoned the, any of that property where we are, where Bold Rock is currently. We could not have rezoned that, because light industrial is the only zone that would allow Bold Rock to expand. And if we rezoned it to neighborhood commercial right now, we can't expand. We're stuck with the size and the limitations that we are. And if we had to rezone it to residential, we're stuck as a pre-existing non-conforming use that can't expand. In, in your ordinance, it says, there's no expansion of legal non-conforming use.
But you could have at some point, well, even now, the property to the west is light industrial. So in the years that Bold Rock has been there, which I don't even remember how long, that could have been a property purchase anticipating that they wanted to expand, but that's just not something that has been done up to this point.
It is not, and, and the new statute, the 160D statute, right, says that community groups can't request a downzoning of that property, but the staff and/or council through staff can request a downzoning. And what we're trying to do, Bold Rock is trying to be good neighbors. We are saying, we don't know if we're going to expand, but we very well might, right? We're number two in distributions of ciders east of the Mississippi, right? So there is a high likelihood that it's going to expand. And if they expand, they want to stay right there. Why? I mean, because they've been there, they have their facility, they don't want to go anywhere. We also anticipate that Mills River, because of the 2040 comprehensive plan that was adopted, isn't going to let those parcels south of Old Schoolhouse Road remain light industrial. And so, ounce of prevention is really what we're doing. We're saying, it seems logical to us, Bold Rock, to me, that it would be, if anything, that chunk of property that we're on now, and, and some to the south, would be neighborhood commercial. And if it was going to be neighborhood commercial, and I'm reading tea leaves, but if it was going to be neighborhood commercial, I certainly would want my client to be able to expand in that district, right? Normally, what we would do is, we would come with a text amendment and a map amendment that says, here's our text amendment to neighborhood commercial, we want to change these issues. But at the same time, we also want to rezone the property to that new district, if it gets passed, right? But we didn't do that, because I don't know if it's going to get passed, and certainly didn't want to have that application for neighborhood commercial out there without, without knowing how this, how this board is going to make a recommendation to council.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Does anyone else have any questions for Mr. Golden?
I do have an inquiry, not so much for Mr. Golden, though, but I was interested in Jeff, Mr. Moore, if your opinion about the infrastructure in that area. Do you have a road infrastructure opinion on that?
About Schoolhouse Road and the width, and the, Schoolhouse Road's been widened over the years. It's, I believe it's 20 feet, I'd have to look that up and see. It would be more of intersections that would concern me. You know, as a traffic engineer, we look at basically the level of service of an intersection. We do have a signal at Schoolhouse and NC 191. We don't have a signal at Banner Farm in NC 191. And one would have to expect a certain amount of traffic from an expansion would use that intersection there. And, you know, I would hope that at some point, an expansion would require a traffic impact analysis, which then would look at all those intersections and say, well, something needs to be done here to handle the increased traffic. So, but yeah, that's, that's really my thoughts, that makes sense reasonably?
Yeah.
Okay, I would ask a question, Mr. Golden, if you don't mind, about the conditional zoning, which I've got some experience with in Asheville. That only lasts for that use, correct?
Yes.
If it were conditionally zoned. So then if that use went away, it would revert back to its previous zoning.
So that, that particular use runs with the land, so whatever, if it was the kennel, right?
Yes.
And then that, then the kennel use after five years ceased, it doesn't revert back. There's a process that you have to go through to change it back to whatever it is. It would always remain as a conditional zoning kennel.
Couldn't be conditional zoning cat sweater factory without going through?
Without going through the process again.
Okay.
It would stay a kennel. And in fact, I don't know the issue that you're dealing with in Asheville, but in Hendersonville City, we're doing exactly that, where it's been conditional zoned for a medical facility to be run out of a house that is now torn down. Can't do anything with the property.
Really?
Because there's no house. So we are, again, applying for conditional zoning, which, which is good. I like conditional zoning, I mean, it protects the community, so that, you know, you go, okay, well, I can have a kennel here in the industrial district, but I don't necessarily have to worry about an asphalt plant. Bad analogy.
Right, but, but it does offer that protection against future, because anytime we do a zoning, a rezoning, we have to think about any use that could ever fit under that zoning in the future.
That's correct, and that's, you all are limited to that. Any use that's allowed in light industrial can happen in any property that's rezoned light industrial, whereas conditional zoning limits it just to the particular use that's being applied.
But we don't have that yet.
No.
Or if ever, we don't have that.
I, you know, no, you don't have it now, would it be a good thing for you to have? Yes, I'm sure staff is saying, please, we'd love to have it, but Daniel would have to draft it up, and I don't know if Daniel wants it or not. I like it, it's a useful tool.
And for clarification, it is allowable under state statute, but it's not within the town's ordinance, so.
Sure, it would have to be added.
That's right.
Perfectly, like 160D 608, maybe, or something like that.
But if I understand this situation here, staff does support a text amendment, just different. So there's, so staff is in support of an amendment to allow this expansion, it's just, how do we get there? That's the question.
That's right.
Yes, yes, and we would advocate for staff review, we trust your staff, you have great staff. They want to push it off to the Board of Adjustment. But I would ask the board also to really consider the, well, I just closed it off, but the, the amendment that Mr. Cobb took out, which is the sales training and meeting facilities related to the principal use, I would ask that, that this board consider adding that back in as part of a recommendation to council, excluding the overnight lodging.
But the overnight lodging was to be for this use, not necessarily a hotel.
No, for sales training and?
Sales training, to have some rooms that people in training could use.
Yeah, yeah, that, that was the idea. But striking that out, they could go just to the closest hotel, which is probably up by here. Thank you.
Any additional questions, comments?
I just have a comment. I really, it sounds like this is a hurry-up project here. And we just spent two years working on the 2040 comprehensive plan. And now we're basically, to me, wanting to change it. I didn't get this information until about four o'clock Friday afternoon, as you know, it's been a holiday weekend, quite busy, so at this point, I think we need more time, if we're going to do anything, to look at it. That's my opinion.
One of the comments I'd like to make is, and it goes to Jim's more time, in the, in the attachment A version, it occurs to me that the suggested new uses are pretty narrow to your industry. And as a town, perhaps, if we wanted to make such a change, maybe there are other uses that we could, should, or want to consider. I'm not saying we do, but if we, if we do want to consider changes, that, that maybe food and beverage is not the only, the only thing that we would consider. The other thing is, I guess, as I, as I looked at this, and I didn't, I didn't get to spend too much time on it like Jim, I think, I think for my money, I would like to retain some control over specific uses, rather than doing anything blanket across a zoning, across a zoning type, that we put in there some kind of mechanism, and Young, tell me what that is, but put in some kind of mechanism that we consider on a case-by-case basis, or review on a case-by-case basis what the desired use is.
I just want to point out for clarification, the attachment A, that language is slightly different than what is in attachment B, and that is because attachment A was all part of the original application, so for the record. So for the record, it's included in your packet, but as far as the text in it, you can essentially ignore that because Brian and Mr. Golden and I sat down and reviewed that and I expressed to him some things that I thought might make more sense and some rewording. And, and he did that and sent it back. And so what's an attachment B is the outcome of that conversation. And it's just formatted to be in the town's codes format as opposed to the, the note formatting that was provided on the application, which is perfectly normal. That's how these, how these process, these work. And to your point, Jim, about the Comprehensive Plan, Mr. Golden makes a good point about the future land use vision map in the Comprehensive Plan shows these properties, these industrials own properties as I believe it's mixed use residential. So it's a step down from what it is right now. And until the zoning districts change, neighborhood commercial is a, is a good fit for that category because it allows some commercial, but also lots of residential, well, single family homes as well. So this would be to, to Mr. Golden's point, an ounce of prevention, if you will. So that if that, if those industrially zone properties go to neighborhood commercial, which is what they were up until about 2010, and this is approved in one version or another, then his client's abilities to purchase land or expand or lease or what have you would still be retained with the new standards available to them.
My argument with that would be neighborhood commercial is defined the way it is to specifically prohibit things such as a 20,000 square foot footprint warehouse in areas where they are. When some of these properties were changed to light industrial, that process wasn't necessarily a great process. But one of the things that I think we've consistently seen our community talk about and that we have reflected in all of our planning is preserving the nature of Mills River and trying to keep light industrial in a particular area of the town. I have talked to some of the current town council members who helped to make the decision about where the Lowe's warehouse currently is, and that's one of their greatest regrets is making that decision because they don't feel like it was the best fit. And that's right in the same areas where we're, some of this, not all of this property, but some of this property is that we're, we're talking about tonight. It ju, it just feels to me like that there are parties who don't necessarily like the way the ordinance is currently written. And so they're suggesting changes because they're allowed to do that. That's part of our ordinance to make them text amendments you can. I think there's a reason why our current zones are where they are, and I think the definitions for those zones, though I'm not opposed to change, I think the way those zones are written, it has worked. There's a reason why they're where they are and it has worked for, for many years. I have served on the planning board for over seven years now, and I've never seen a request for text amendment until the past month, and we've had two of those. So I'm not really sure what's going on there. But I just, I just think we should also be very cautious about the precedent that we're setting. And people say, oh, this is something we can do. Let's start proposing this rather than requesting a rezoning, or this is the, the path of least resistance. I don't know, but I, I, I definitely think that, that we should be very cautious. I personally, and I'm one person, am not in favor of this text amendment, but again, I'm, I'm one person. So any more discussion I'd love to entertain. Okay. So to further this along then, again, we are an advisory board on this issue. So we have three options before us. We can recommend, recommend approval of the text amendment. We can recommend disapproving the text amendment, or we can postpone a decision, a request that we, we look at a little bit further. So I would love to hear your ideas on that.
Jim, now you had mentioned needing or wanting more time. Is that a motion for holding it for the 45 days?
No, at this point, as a matter of fact, I would make a motion. We disapprove it.
I second that motion.
So at this time, we have a motion and a second to disapprove this request for a text amendment. All in favor of disapproval, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
I, I would like to have some more time to think about it, but as it is right.
I need to vote.
Yes or a no? Well, I would say no, just because I'd like to have more time. But that's, that's it. I'd like to give it more, more thought, but so I'm just one of the.
So that is a no vote for text, and I know that we have to give a statement of consistency.
Yes, there is a draft in your packet, but with this.
But that was for, that was not for a disapproval vote, so.
Yeah. So you can, you can, we can draft one up that, that you would sign. And with the board's input, I'm going to ask this question. Do you believe this is inconsistent or consistent with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan?
We, we as a planning board believe that it is inconsistent. With the, I guess, does it have to be relevant to the Comprehensive Plan specifically?
It would be helpful if you referenced it to some extent, yes.
Okay. Without having that before me, I did glance at objective 2.4, policy 2.4.1, but I'm not sure if that's exactly where I would land.
Okay.
Because I didn't realize until about 30 minutes before this meeting that I might have to have that available to me, so.
Well, we can draft one and then send it out to you as the chair.
Sure.
And you can sign it.
That would be awesome. Thank you so much.
And just for clarification, this has been a recommendation of denial for this application. It will go to town council. As is due process for them to consider it and for these folks to have their day in court, so to speak.
Not necessarily in court, but in county.
Okay. Thank you so very much. Mr. Golden, you are, you are dismissed unless you want to hang out for a little bit longer.
Thank you all.
Okay. So our next order of new business is a rezoning request, R-21-03, the John Parr Revocable Trust. And Mike is going to handle that for us tonight. So you're, you're up.
That's right. Good evening, board members. For your consideration tonight, we have rezoning request R-2103 to rezone approximately 15 acre tract of land at 598 miles via drive from light industrial to MR30 residential. The application was received and paid on June 7. Basically looking at the change from industrial to residential, it's a down zoning because we're changing from a light industrial zone. And if you look at attachment D, with all the light industrial uses, you can see the extensive list of highly intensive uses allowed in that district. And then MR30, obviously having less intensive uses, this is considered down zoning, which is allowed to be initiated, as was just mentioned by council or by the property owner. So that's one consideration. We do want to consider all possible uses with all rezonings. So with MR30, we've attached those. Also in attachment E. Going back, if you look at attachment B and C, I've also illustrated basically the current zoning map with the parcel outlined in red in light industrial, and then the proposed zoning map, again, with the parcel outlined in red and then colored in purple for MR30. Going through the districts, we already went through those. So basically staff's finding is that the request is inconsistent with the 2040 Comprehensive Plan and future land use map, which is an attachment F, which designates the property as industrial and employment center. It could also be considered spot zoning, although the property is attached just at one end to the MR30 district. You can see it kind of bisects the light industrial area. So we do need to consider spot zoning considerations as well. With spot zoning, there's the reasonableness standard set out by the state of North Carolina. So again, when considering spot zoning and creating a statement of reasonableness, you want to consider the size and physical attributes of the site, compatibility with the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, compatibility with existing uses of the site and neighboring properties, and then the benefits and detriments to the landowner. Now, just because the rezoning is inconsistent with the future land use map, if it's approved, does automatically modify the future land use map. And that's the conclusion of my report. It's pretty straightforward. Staff recommends denial due to the inconsistency with the recently adopted future land use map, part of the 2040 plan. And again, the planning board's role is advisory, so we can, the board can recommend approval of the request table for additional consideration or recommend denial. Now, John Parr, the trustee of the John Parr Revocable Trust, should be online. I don't see if he joined Zoom, but he was going to be available for questions, but it doesn't look like he made it. So I'm happy to answer any that you may have.
Tried to find this property with my GPS. I finally had, one of my GPSes did. Never would find it for me, but the best I could find, he said, I'm there. I'm, I'm right adjacent to Pepsi. Is that correct? And there's a mailbox out there. It has this address on it and another address. But I, I didn't see a sign anywhere there that says this, this has been rezoned, or is it too early to have that sign up?
So there's no, there's no posted notice, if that's what you're referring to, because we do that before the council hearing where there's a public hearing. But you are correct. It's behind Amazon towards the French Broad River.
Right across from, right across from Amazon. I determined that because here's a mailbox says this is. And my GPS finally said, you have arrived. So I assumed that was it. You know, I couldn't really distinguish, but looking at this, again, as you pointed out, it's it's right in the middle of MR one. And I would tend to agree with the recommendation you stated to deny this.
I'll just state, since the applicant's not here, what he discussed with me on the phone in our preliminary conversation is that he was seeking to rezone because the topography of the site, part of it's in a flood plain, and also there's two ponds and a, and a stream running through the property. So again, I'm not speaking on behalf of the applicant, but when talking to him, he told me that he was looking to rezone because he felt industrial development was not feasible for this property. But again, at the staff level, we're referring to the future land use map and the Comprehensive Plan, and that's why we recommend denial.
I would tend to agree with the recommended, recommendation of denial actually directly supports my argument with our previous case that we've tried to, to push industrial development and limit it to a particular area of Mills River, and that is exactly where we desire it to be. And if we take this chunk of property out of that formula, then we're limiting ourselves. So I think we need to leave it zoned just as it is. And, you know, if an industry wants it, they'll figure out a way to make it happen. If they don't, they don't. So I, I agree with the, the denial of the request.
Yeah, something, I also drove out there, Jim, and my GPS didn't get me there. I, I think, I, I think I arrived. That's right. But it's interesting to me that the map and the land look very different. The map says it's light industrial. When you get out there of the land, there's a cattle farm and woods. There's nothing industrial about that once you get beyond Pepsi and, and Amazon. So the thought occurred to me, and this is not a, a decision on my part, one way or the other, but you have to ask yourself, did we, did we get, did we get the, the light industrial right or wrong? And it's, it's something that I've thought about with the, with the Comprehensive Plan is that there are a lot of parcels on the plan, and this is a new one that's come to my attention, where I don't know if what our plan says has anything to do with what the landowners want from that. And I, you know, and I, I think, you know, in the army, we have a saying that even the best plan changes upon first contact. As soon as you make contact, something's going to change. And these three instances are kind of our first contact. And it brings up questions about, did we get the plan right? Or are the landowners right? So I, I don't have an answer to that, but I think we're going to see more and more of this because, you know, because we didn't, we couldn't ask each landowner, hey, do you agree with what we're proposing in the Comprehensive Plan? I still think it's a good plan. But I think we're going to run into more of these.
I do think we run the potential, and it's just a potential, and this is a rabbit trail here. I think we run the potential when we use the statements, and I know I think this is going to be standard practice, when we use the statements of where staff recommends because of the Comprehensive Plan. I think we're, have the potential of angering people, quite frankly. I know that's potential on our board anyways, but I, I just, I, I do see that inconsistency there.
Although I will say that every person in Mills River had an opportunity, numerous opportunities to participate in the development of this plan and argue their case and, you know. But I get it.
I just know that this is going to be something much clearer now going forward, you know, so we have to wrap our heads around that.
We spent two years, and like you say, everybody had an opportunity and realized everybody didn't take the opportunity. But we'll have to go with what we got and give it a chance. Here we are in six weeks into the plan and we want to change it. Well, we'll see.
So are there any more questions or discussion, or is someone ready to make a motion?
I was just going to jump in. There is a statement of consistency attached. It does reference the objectives in the comp plan about saving those zoning districts for industrial development. So if there's a motion, and if you're okay with this statement of consistency as drafted, please just reference that.
Yeah, I would just say to weigh in that I agree with Madam Chair about the industrial uses are rare. It's, it's hard to create another industrial use. It's easier to take an industrial use and zone it down. But there, you know, unless we annex property or grow that way, we're not going to get any more industrial. And so that's, to me, that would, that would concern me about losing that if it's truly not suitable for industrial. I, I don't know. I'm not necessarily convinced. Again, I agree with you that someone may find a use there that fits an industrial use. So if it's time, I would make a motion that we deny this request for zoning, recommend denial.
So we have recommended denial of the motion for rezoning. Do I get a second of that?
I'll second.
Second, I, Jim. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So we are recommending denial of the rezoning request because it is inconsistent with elements of the Making Mills River 2014 Comprehensive Plan, specifically objectives 1.6, policy 1.6.2, and objective 6.2, policy 6.2.1. I will not read them because you are all literate, but I will put my signature on the back and submit that. Any other questions about that? Okay. Do we have any additional items? Daniel, could you just go over for those of us who are here, the questions that I asked you specifically about the makeup of the boards that town council determined at their last meeting, just for clarification?
Sure. So back in March, town council.
So back in March, Town Council froze all appointments and reappointments to all of its boards, including the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, Finance Committee, A Committee, and the Parks and Recreation Committee. Excuse me, not the Agricultural Advisory Committee. And in that time, they were discussing amongst themselves the makeup of these boards, the purpose of these boards, and the future of these boards moving forward. And at their last meeting, they specifically discussed the planning board, as well as the number of members on the town's boards. One of the items that they did was dissolve the Finance Committee. The Finance Committee was established back when the town, before the town even incorporated, to help with incorporation. And then it was very relevant for the first several years when there were only, only a part-time employee to issue checks to pay bills. Then when there was just one employee, it was very relevant. They were reviewing bank statements and journal entries and signing off on checks because at the time, you had one person running payroll for themselves, and it was just good to have that extra oversight. Over the years, as staff has grown, staff is kind of, or the organization itself has kind of outgrown the purpose of that committee. Now that we have a Budget Officer, a Finance Director, an Auditor, and Auditor for the Auditor, plus out of the six employees in Town Hall, five of us touch every invoice essentially. So that was dissolved. And then the other item that they agreed upon was the number of members for each of the three boards. So Planning Board, Board of Adjustment, and Parks and Recreation Advisory are all going to be seven-member boards. This board is currently nine members, it was established by ordinance. So the ordinance actually has to be amended before this is official. So you still, you still are a nine-member board at this point. So it's really important that all of you show up for meetings moving forward until the ordinance is changed. Because a quorum is still five out of nine, it's not five out of seven yet, or four out of seven. So that will likely happen very, very early, either in August or September, we'll get that ordinance drafted and take it to council. You will see it first as the planning board. And they will be discussing appointments and reappointments to each of those three boards later on this year. Once we have the ordinance, excuse me, the planning board ordinance squared away. And there, we haven't decided on an official method for this, but what it looks like is going to happen is each council member will make an appointment from their district for a nomination. And then that nomination will be voted upon, and the next person will appoint someone for a specific board. That nomination will be voted on by the board. And just continue going down the line until each board committee is filled. That may mean that some folks don't move, some folks might be reappointed to other boards. We did ask everyone, and we got responses from almost everyone, I think, on their first choice and second choice. So they're, we have a very dedicated volunteer base, and the town's very lucky in that. It looks like they're going to start that process sometime, probably later this year, in August or September, to get that wrapped up. So that's a good, that's a good thing, take a look at all the boards.
Let me see if I understood correctly. I was listening to the council meeting, I tried to, the audio was not good. And officially, we are still a nine-member board.
That's right.
But we only have seven.
That's right.
So to have a quorum, do we have to have four or five?
Five.
We ought to have five. Now the quorum tonight, barely.
Yep, officially, you're still a nine-member board with two vacancies.
Okay.
Does it start terms over?
No, it's two.
Ryan is absent tonight, excused. Yeah. So it's six. Oh, and Marion, you're right, three.
Yeah, you are at three, sorry about that. Yeah.
I don't expect any more 30th anniversaries anymore.
If we're still officially nine, we would have to have five, have a quorum.
Right.
We got five tonight. So who's missing tonight?
Ryan, Brian.
Right, okay, so we do still have six on, okay.
Okay, any other additional items that need to be discussed?
Not an additional item, but I just, I want to commend you on your work this evening. To Heath's point, now that this plan is adopted, we as staff have a very clear direction moving forward on when we review applications for text amendments, rezonings, or anything else related to development for that matter. And we will be referencing that plan often, so I think it's important that you acknowledge that this evening, and that's, that's the way of the future.
And speaking of that, is there a way that we could, I mean, I could print one out for myself, but maybe, maybe get a working
Yes, we're going to.
Copy of that that we could keep with us in addition to the ordinance book, because, you know, anytime we need to reference that, it would be super helpful, because that does include the land use vision map, correct?
Sure, well, we, we've just met a week or so ago to finalize all the map details, so that's, that's almost ready for publication, or excuse me, printing. Probably in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that, get that wrapped up, and we'll get copies, everybody. Like any updates on development that are worth mentioning at this point?
Plenty of zoning permits, plenty of development. We got 15 zoning permits just today, or was it Friday, for Mills River crossing south, the next two phases. Plenty of activity, but I'm happy to take any specific questions.
Okay, we did decide, did you go back to one meeting a month, right? Okay, you said 15, we may have to go to three.
I have a question. Do we have any form or format or mechanism to kind of track our actions, what happens to them after we? And I, if, if not, I would propose that that would be useful. For instance, when we, when we made a recommendation on the Anointed Word Church property, that's just the one that comes to mind. Where is it in the process now, what's happened to it? Is, do we have a way of like a, yeah, just kind of keeping us updated on what's happened with what we have considered?
We don't have anything in practice right now, but we, we could just start doing that, I guess. So like with, with both of these requests this evening, one of them will be going to council, and I guess, I can't think about that for a second, but once they get to council and a decision is made, we can report back to you as a board at the next meeting, what the outcome was. Is that what you're at?
Yeah, or if we just had a spreadsheet or something, you could hand us. I mean, it doesn't even need a report necessarily, but you know, just kind of a, what the, what the action was, what our action was, what town council did, and what's the current status of it.
Daniel, I remember. Daniel, I remember a couple of meetings ago, council, and I brought it up. Was talking about getting some better equipment to broadcast the meetings and all. Where do we stand on that?
I met with two different companies last week to do a walkthrough of this room, and they're going to give me quotes in the next couple of weeks. So we're gonna, we're looking to have a fixed camera on this back wall so that it'll capture the board, pantiled zooms, we can move around, I think I'm just speaking. And then we're going to get upgraded microphones, hopefully that you won't have to constantly turn off and on. That might still be a requirement, because there are a lot of mics in this room, and we have full, full board with staff. A couple of cameras, or maybe just one on the back wall to capture the, the audience as well as the public speaker. And then we are going to add some more speakers, and maybe in this room if we need them, but definitely in the hallway and in the lobby, so that if you have overflow, people can hear it. And then we'll have a, hopefully a TV in the lobby as well. Again, so if there's overflow, people can see what's happening in the room. And we're going to get some sort of permanent setup. One of the gentlemen I spoke to had a really great idea, take all the AV equipment that we use right now and put it on a cart so that it can be wheeled out for a meeting, instead of having to be set up behind you guys. And we'll have a dedicated machine, instead of having a laptop in here every time we, we have a meeting. And a little bit better camera for the live streaming as well, so.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, it should be great.
So Town Council is not meeting again until August.
That's right.
That's what I'm seeing.
That's right.
Can I ask one thing about, for additional? And I know, since I've been on here, all I've done is mention traffic impact analyses. Not because I want the work, because I can't do the work. My company cannot do one here, as long as I'm on the board, that just wouldn't be right. And I don't plan to resign just so that I can do it, because I've got plenty. But if there were to be an amendment or a change to the code to require traffic impact analyses for other uses besides just major subdivisions, would that come through this board? Would we make a recommendation? Would staff make a recommendation? And I keep going back to the lows, they could have signalized Banner Pharma 191, because the trucks, the traffic, signals warranted, money's not there from DOT. So situations like that, I'm not pushing for a traffic signal on every corner, I don't like them necessarily. Any more than, except where they're needed. But if all we have, the ability to request a study for TIA is a major subdivision, there could be other things that wouldn't fit that, that maybe we should look into. So is that something that we as a board would ask, or would staff ask, or, I don't know?
So one of the things that Mike and I have been working on the last couple of weeks is compiling a list of things that are worth reconsidering in the ordinance. Things that, like if you remember back during the Moore and Son Special Use Permit process, how there was some back and forth between the boards, and it just got a little bit confusing. That's really just a procedural thing, is it be cleaned up? But it does require review by this board and then review by Town Council. So we are working on a list of things like that, and this could certainly be added to that list of things that we could consider.
If, if I can be of any assistance, I've got some information from other municipalities and what their requirements are. And I'd be glad to help throw some ideas out there if you wanted to consider those. Some municipalities, or Buncombe County, 75 units. So if you have an apartment building with 75 units, you got to do a traffic study. Asheville, it's 100 trips in a peak hour. I believe it's Weaverville or one of the other towns in Buncombe County that requires 75 trips in a peak hour.
What is that equivalent to, like, what would be 75?
Excellent. Oh, okay, tell me when to stop. So with, when, when I get in my car, I go to work, that's one trip. And I come back, that's two trips. For a single-family home, generally that's 10 trips per day, generally, and that's averaged out. So not, now, that's about one in a peak hour, because figure about 10% of the daily traffic is a peak hour traffic. Peak hours, 15 consecutive, four, four consecutive 15-minute periods between 7:00 AM, 9:00 AM, or 4:00 PM and 6:00 PM. You're looking for the highest traffic, kind of the hump on the curve. So usually somewhere, let's say about 75, okay, 10 single-family homes is going to be 100 trips per day, 10 trips in the peak hour. So what I had in Asheville is I maintain a spreadsheet based on particular uses when it's going to require a traffic study. And so I would just say, hey, you're putting in, you know, you got 150 apartments, you're going to have to do a traffic study. Because apartments produce less traffic. Age-targeted units, even less. And nursing homes, medical uses, et cetera. It all depends on the use. But the idea is that the infrastructure should be able to handle 100 trips in a peak hour. Now, we also get the argument, which straw breaks the camel's back, right? But there's also the argument that once property is zoned, and NC DOT is aware of the zoning, and it's there, if the use falls within the zoning, DOT's got to keep up with it. That's why we pay taxes and gas taxes and car taxes, et cetera, is to get our infrastructure maintained and improved when necessary. So, you know, if 100 is a good number, then maybe we should think about 100. If 75 is a good number, maybe some of our roads are, were built by my dad when he was seven years old hauling water to the mule teams, building the roads in Mills River in Anawa. And they've just widened a little bit over time, there's still curves, there's still intersections that make us sweat. And so maybe 75 is a better number. So whatever, you know, whatever we think. But at least then we've got a trigger point so that y'all can say, yeah, yeah, you want to build that? We need a traffic study. And then the traffic study could determine what needs to be done to the, maybe a turn lane. So, and that's, that is part of that study, you need a left turn lane or a right turn lane, depending on how the traffic's working out. So thanks for your time, I apologize for talking too long, but I, I think that would be a valuable tool for the town, and is we're growing and our roads are not. So, thanks.
And that has come up numerous times in our discussion, and I, I think it, the more tools that you can have in your tool belt to make well-rounded decisions, the better offer going to be. So I think, I think I would highly recommend adding that to the list of things to consider.
And something, if I can add one more thing, a traffic study does not mean you cannot build something. No matter how bad, it just says what you have to do to mitigate it. So people often, you know, they'll say, well, I want a traffic study because we shouldn't build that. Well, it's not, we shouldn't build that, it's if we build it, what do we need to do? What does the developer need to do to make it work?
Anything else while we're having this little discussion?
I apologize for pushing the geke-meter up into the orange zone, maybe?
We've come to expect nothing less.
I appreciate that.
I say that very fondly.
No, I appreciate that, believe me.
All right, well, it is the magic time of the night, if anyone would like to make a motion?
A motion that we adjourned?
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Jenk. And all in favor? I am assuming none are opposed. Thank you much, our next meeting is scheduled for August the 3rd.